Right nominations for the position of Chair for the duration of this meeting. Can I have an indication from members, please?
On the principle, it should be an opposition member for the for Mayor Osgood. Now, I'd like to move councillor Kemp.
Thank you councillor Radford. Is that seconded? It's not. Just for the benefit of public record, councillor Radford's motion is not seconded. If it falls, I'll now transfer over to councillor Maria Toole, who wishes to move on alternative nomination.
Can I nominate for Tom Cardwell, please?
Thank you councillor Toole. Is that seconded? Thank you councillor Mori. Are there any objections? No? In which case councillor Cardwell, please come forward and take the chair.
At this point, could I ask what progress is being made to fill a permanent Chair for this? I think we're now, oh, I was hoping the mayor might tell us. Thank you.
Trust me, the deadline was the 30th of September. We've had a number of applications, so we should be able to appoint someone in time for the next meeting.
We'll be deciding who the unlucky person is.
I'm not entirely sure. Democratic Services usually make those kinds of appointments.
It's usually interviewed, isn't it? So if there is, I think there should be an opposition member present.
Thank you councillor Kemp. For purposes of clarity, in order to ensure neutrality in the process, there have been no member involvement, similar to how they approach adoption standards and ethics committee appointments. However, obviously, the proposed nominee will be confirmed to members, so you'll have the chance to review that appointment itself. But again, it has been a competitive process. Full advertisements have been conducted as well as interviews, and obviously we'll be able to confirm that appointment very shortly. And we thank members for your patience whilst we've worked our way through this process.
Okay, can I ask if there are any declarations of interest from members and officers present this evening? No, thank you. Minutes of the last meeting, can members refer to pages six to fifteen of the agenda, which comprised the minutes of the last meeting held on the 18th of August 2021? Yeah, agreed. Councillor Gibbons?
Yeah, I did just want to raise one point, and that is the ACC. There's a line that actually refers to the ACC, but I think it's worth noting for members and for the public that since the last meeting, the banned massive attackers withdrawn, the ANUS, Unite and NU have all expressed their concern. And I think it indicates that long-term reputational and commercial damage could outweigh any short-term income. And I'd refer colleagues and the public to the answers to the questions that are put forward about the ACC and its response on the ethical charter. And I think we have to make the maximum reputa-, the maximum representations so that we don't have this event occurring again in our city. And I also think it should be noted that there's a legal challenge from public interest lawyers that I raised as well in the questions.
Thank you councillor Gibbons. As you've indicated, as indeed the Chair will come to shortly, we note that you submitted two questions. Noting that there's no question time formally included on today's agenda, by way of assistance, the mayor has reviewed those and provided responses. Just to reiterate as well for members' benefit, as you recall from our last meeting, John, discussion is scrutiny of the performance and activities of companies wholly owned by the council lies and is vested with our audit committee as opposed to Mayor and Performance Select Committee. And again, your questions from last time were referred directly to that committee. In terms of the other matters which you've raised, again, those are not matters included on tonight's Items of Business for Debate. But again, they're matters of public record, and obviously members have expressed their respective views. I would ask members to however refrain from commenting on any active legal proceedings or challenges in relation to this event from any party, because that may prejudice the council's position and that of other parties to those proceedings. Other than that, I'll revert to the Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I refer members to pages one to five and sixteen to forty-one of the agenda and supplement, which provide us with a detailed update and overview of the council's performance management framework? And can I ask Mayor Joanne to comment and introduce the report before I bring in officers to address us?
Thank you Chair. Lisa Smith and her team have been working working on our performance management framework. It's widely recognised that the council is on an improvement and transformation journey in terms of service delivery, structure and culture. The process is framed around a detailed improvement plan, which members discussed at length and agreed at our July council meeting. The improvement plan sits in the context of the wider policy framework of the council. One of the key policies we have is the City Plan, which ourselves and a range of other partner agencies developed and have committed to delivering. For the council, however, we need to deliver those objectives. Sorry, for the council, how we deliver those objectives will be structured through a new council plan, the contents of which shape our feedback and other opportunities that members will have to influence the detail within our council plan. Delivery against the improvement plan, City Plan and all our policy frameworks are underpinned by a common theme: performance management. This report is about giving us the tools, so there is clear insight into how the council is progressing, looking across at service delivery and an organisational health and effectiveness. The report before you tonight provides information on our new performance framework, which will support our improvement journey, aid scrutiny and challenging above all give a transparent view as we deliver improvements. Members' comments are really welcome in terms of shaping how we can judge performance in the future and ensuring that the work that we do is easily understood by us. So it's really critical in our development of this framework that we have your inputs. Thank you.
Okay councillor Radford, please.
I should chairman. I was looking through the indices and I do appreciate that various times government's had different KPIs and performance indicators, and you could never work out which ones were most relevant, which ones were distracting from the real targets. But I have to say, I found the list a bit puzzling, you know. I'll just throw a few comments out if I may, and not expecting instant answer, but maybe someone might want to consider them and then come back. On the health ones, there's nothing about air quality and air pollution and the impact on respiratory diseases, which is a very serious issue for large parts of the city. I must admit, we had a discussion of this at the overview scrutiny committee for the regional combined authority this afternoon. So that does strike me. We don't have anything on access to sort of healthy eating and levels of diabetes is a real big serious issue and cancer. So it just struck me that some of the indicators, I thought, were actually less pertinent than those on health items. And I must admit, I've only done a casual review, and there's others which I think were quite perversely phrased. Fly tipping incidents cleared within five days, I get that. But maybe we also as well need to look at the number of prosecutions to prevent the fly tipping taking place in the first place. Because I've got, I must admit, I'm very grateful for the cleansing team have shifted a hell of a lot of backlog after the close down of the recycling centres, and there was more dumping during the Covid lockdown. I'm not justifying it, that was just a horrible fact. And I know they've done a tremendous work trying to clear the backlog log. And I have to say, walking around quite frequent parts of the city, it looks a lot better now. But I think one of the things a lot of residents are concerned about is what actions are we taking to prevent the fly tipping in the first place? Are we prosecuting people? I've given witness statements about sites where I think prosecutions have had, some of my own residents have. And I think sometimes residents have felt the prosecutions haven't been followed through. So I think we need to go back to source and actually see what we could do to reduce them. Certainly with all the pressures on environmental issues globally, let alone locally. It didn't appear there was anything on the levels of recycling in the corporate performance. Again, to be honest, you talk about triple lock and social benefit. One of the big benefits of the communal rollout of the Euro bins, which I would like to see, if I be candid, extended in geographical areas, not just to the Forford entries, but the Langford entries, is there was a 28% increase in the amount of the refuse that was recycled in the blue bins. That has a phenomenal financial benefit for the city. That doesn't appear in the KPIs. So just think that would be useful. I think it's badly phrased, and it's got under three neighbourhoods. The number of asylum seekers, less is better. Is that really what we want to be saying? I think that's I think that's unfortunate phraseology, but that's what's actually on the sheet. I'd like to see maybe asylum seekers housed would be more a better parameter than seeking to reduce the number of asylum seekers. We shouldn't be in a position of controlling the number of asylum seekers. What we should be doing as a council is controlling the amount of support we get to those people who need asylum. That, I think, is just badly phrased. I hope that's not what was meant. On vaccination rates, it talks about the number of first vaccination rates. Maybe we need to update that to double vaccination rates. I think what we there's just a couple of things there that just think that stood out as being unusual. I think maybe maybe we need to look at what are the key issues and the other thing on housing, I didn't, I didn't see, and I might have missed it in the proofing, was reducing the amount of derelict properties. Certainly in those who represent a community, a derelict house is a conduit for good time for everybody else in the street. A derelict house can be a conduit for them in pest control issues.
So councillor, can I?
That's a couple of points I thought picked up. I know you said you want questions on the KPIs.
Okay, I think some of this may be covered when we come to Lisa's presentation now. I know councillor Klein, you had your hand up. Is it something that you would like to say now and keep it maybe short?
Thank you Chair. I must say, I think that the whole approach of this document is woefully inadequate. And I want to take you back to the meeting we had in Everton Park only last Wednesday, when we discussed the City Plan. This document continually refers to the City Plan, which is not a strategic document of this council. Because to be a strategic document of this council, it has to be approved by Cabinet, and Cabinet has to bring it to council for debate and possible amendment. We had a debate last week, but it was no vote. It wasn't to approve that document. I'm not entirely sure what it was for, as it turned out, but we made no recommendation, no amendments. We just waffled around it. So I just want to reiterate two of the waffles that I brought there to show how inadequate that document is, and therefore how inadequate this document is. How can we have in this city a City Plan, which is supposed to be the high-level document, which doesn't mention social housing in a city which is crying out for more social housing? It doesn't mention low-cost home ownership. It doesn't mention any of the voids that we have, which councillor Radford is quite right, but in this city, there's more than 9,000 of them at the moment. What's that got to do with our planning? And if we don't get things right at the macro level, the vision, the direction level, how do we then produce an implementation plan? And if we don't have an implementation plan to pick up on those items, how do we then monitor it? So then, let's deal with how we approach.
Sorry councillor Klein, I did ask for you to keep it brief.
I mean, this is the only item on the agenda, Chair. I mean, this is very important.
I made a suggestion, Chair. Can we listen to Lisa's presentation? In terms of the council plan and the City Plan and the council plan, I've just in my introduction talked about how the council plan will give us direction. This is a presentation on what we anticipate for the performance framework. That it'd be great if we could hear from Lisa first, and then perhaps make comments at the end about what we want to see moving forwards.
I think the problem is a political one here to begin with. Perhaps we should have asked the mayor, but I'm happy.
Okay, so thank you Mayor Joanne. Could I invite Lisa Smith, the Assistant Director for Improvement Policy and Performance, to address us?
Hi, thanks. Thanks very much. And I'll try and pick up some of those points as we go along. You'll remember that I came to your previous meeting, so it's good to be back giving a progress update. And just to let you know, I've got two colleagues with me today that some of you might know from across the council. I've got Sarah Hodgson from Children's Services and Johnny Kevell from Adult Social Care. They have been providing support on a task and finish basis to develop the performance management framework and to begin to operationalise that as the council considers its capacity resource and recruits some resource to do that on a permanent basis. So what you've got in front of you today is a report that just sets out the direction of travel where we are and the progress that we're making. It sets out a set of proposed indicators that we are looking to measure on a quarterly basis. And it also outlines some indicators in relation to the council's improvement plan, although these are very illustrative because we're still talking to commissioners about that. So they are just for, to note that that's the direction of travel. And then, just to support how important this piece of work is in terms of performance management, it is really crucial in terms of measuring our progress as a council, benchmarking ourselves against others, being open to challenge, aiding scrutiny, all of those things are really important. And so getting this right and transparent and reporting it regularly is something that we're very committed to doing. So just to take the list of proposed indicators that you've got in appendix one, we've detailed those by directorates, either by adult social care or they're by children's services, relating to the City Plan aims. And they are the indicators that the council is in control of itself as opposed to the wider population level outcomes, that really what we will be doing on those is reporting on an annual basis. What we've also included in that pack is just the adult social care indicators, so that you can just see what they may look like as a reporting template. And I'm happy to take comments on that and whether you understand the presentation of those and how that can be improved. So the papers that you have also set out our approach to performance management. We went over this a little bit last time in the committee, and that sets out how we'll operationalise performance across the council and all of the directorates. And that includes sort of future developments around performance indicators, how we might need to risk rate those so we can clearly see where our underperformance is impacting most heavily on our organisation and our residents. It is important to recognise where we are now and where we want to be. We are working very closely and utilising our sector advice on this and the LGA's performance maturity index. And this is a journey for the council to be on and to mature our approach to performance, starting with the accurate collection of data, what we need to have, making sure that we can collect that all the way through to how we utilise that and improve services and then challenge our performance as we move on. What we're hoping and aiming for is at the end of November, Cabinet will receive a report which is all of these indicators reported on, and that will then be distributed to this select committee and other select committees. And by March, we want to make sure that all of those indicators have been benchmarked where that's possible against core cities or sit for nearest neighbours or the North West National. And sometimes that's possible, sometimes that isn't. Again, we spoke about that last time. With the removal of the audit commission indicators, the collection of data on a national basis is sometimes limited. We will also routinely be reporting on our performance indicators through the lens of equalities. That will take us a little bit of time to mature and get the data on that. Again, we're limited by what we can have, but we're very committed to working to exploit that data as much as we can so that we can view our performance through that lens. And also our performance through climate change agenda and also pulling out information on social value and how the council is consistently capturing information on social value through its procurements. And so just to also reiterate, on an annual basis, the top-line population level outcomes, some of which councillor Radford mentioned around air quality or the performance around diabetes and cancer will be in that population level performance report. And I'm very happy to look at the comments that were made around asylum seekers. I take that on board. We'll look at that text. I think that's just an unfortunate analysis. So I've taken a couple of notes from that. I'm happy to look into that. But what you've got in front of you is a series of indicators that relate to the directorates of the council and how they link through to the City Plan. It is where we are at the moment. It will mature, and we are happy to take members' input on that. And that's what I'm happy to debate this evening. So I'll close and let people ask questions, and either myself, Johnny or Sarah will be happy to answer any of those.
Okay, so if I open this up to questions, anybody? Anyone else? Okay. Councillor Simich.
Thank you Chair. I'm just looking through these and I see that in terms of the aim of the City Plan being climate, a low-carbon connected and accessible city. And I can see a couple of descriptions here that have to do with fuel poverty and also retrofitting of households, which I would say would go under low carbon. But what about connected and accessible city? There don't seem to be any from what I can see. You know, how do we measure those? How well are we doing in comparison to say? I know that Birmingham has recently been making the news in terms of creating a low-carbon, low-traffic neighbourhoods and zones without traffic, for example. So that would be more about how are we connecting the city and making the city more accessible? So just would like to hear about that, please. Thank you.
Councillor Kemp? Mayor Joanne?
I suppose what we're going to look at tonight is about overall, you know, the indicators and the way that they're shaped in the document. There are questions you've raised around the City Plan. There was an opportunity at the last council meeting for people to contribute, and I don't think that opportunity was taken advantage of. These are things we've committed to at a city level that belong to us as the council, as Lisa pointed out. We don't have our council plan yet, but our council plan will be incorporated into our key performance indicators. We've also got the improvement plan from, we're having a workshop next week with the commissioners to put the detail to our improvement. This is about the framework, as Lisa has mentioned. The detail on the performance indicator will go to the relevant select. And so feedback getting down into the detail will be at those select committees about what the particular performance indicators are. But is this something, the overall shape of the document, the way that it's framed, is this, once we get the indicators right that we agree on, is this the kind of documents that we were happy with that will help us be able to measure whether we're making improvements?
Yeah, councillor Nibb?
My question hasn't been answered.
Oh, sorry.
Just to repeat, I wanted to know how are we hitting the connected and accessible city aim?
Okay. Mayor Joanne?
So I suppose, Leonard, what we're saying is the detailed performance indicators will go to the select in terms of your ability to be able to contribute of what those performance indicators are. So I suppose you could input into this now, any ideas you have about how we should be managing or a key performance indicator around connected and accessible city?
I'll have a think and write it out. Thank you.
Councillor Nibb? Oh, sorry, hang on. Lisa, did you want to answer?
I was really just going to say.
Sorry, George.
If you could just maybe leave that with me and let me, we will have a discussion with sort of our highways colleagues as well and just make sure we've exploited all of the data that we can get on that. I understood what you were saying. So I'm happy to take that comment away. I don't know, Johnny, Sarah, was there anything when you were discussing with Regen? Whether they could provide that kind of information?
Yeah, we have. As part of this project, we've been researching what other local authorities do collect. And there are other local authorities who are able to report on sort of usage of public transport, et cetera. At the moment, we've got that level of data at a city region. So it's about us figuring out how we can disaggregate that to our local authority. But certainly that is an area for development that we've recognised ourselves.
So in a way, that's what's missing here, is the highways, transport, all of those issues that are certain directorate, I suppose, as well. Thank you.
Okay, after two false starts, there's time. Lucky, it's definitely councillor Nibb now.
Thanks, Chair. A small clarification, just letting on what councillor was talking about before, social housing. Now, it's only to reason now, a question that I've got, which I've raised going back two months now, and I'm still waiting for the answer. And the question is about Stonebridge Cross. I happen to be the lead member on Stonebridge Cross on housing. And the last time I heard on that particular project was that the office at least was going to planning in the summer on the grounds that they wanted to build 600 to 900 properties on there. The question is, are we still going ahead with that? Because I've been waiting, as I say. I actually got in touch with Chris Walsh, who advised me at the finance committee to write her in, and he'll get me an answer to it. The answer I got back from Chris was that he was waiting for the finance chair cabinet member, councillor Corbett, to come back off holiday. And actually, the mayor, sorry, in this chamber, said to me she heard what the question is, and she was waiting for the finance director to come back off holiday. Now, in the meantime, I'm getting asked as the lead for housing on that particular project, the Stonebridge Cross, what's happening about it? And I thought, is it right here to ask the question and the mayor gives me the information? Or again, do I have to wait? For summary, because the end of the day, Chair, I have led the housing on that particular project, and I'm not a person that does things off-heartedly, especially on housing. And I promised the people out there that the council at the time and the mayor at the time was agreeing to borrow £50 million from the public to a loan board at 1%. And part of that money would be for the Stonebridge Cross to build either six to nine hundreds, which is more important than anything, council houses, not housing associations, actually council houses. And we got into that discussion across the people that turned up for that meeting. Now, at the end of the day, I don't know, the other question I wanted to get the answer to was, apparently we were borrowing or we had off the Homes England got £300,000 to do a topographical survey day. And I'm getting told that to get carried out. Again, I'm unsure because nobody seemed to want to answer the questions that I'm asking. Now, if we're not going to go ahead with it, what consultation have we had with, A, myself and the other members of that committee? B, more importantly, what consultation have we had with the people from the Croxted, Not a Screen area? Because that's where the concern cuts across, Not a Screen and Croxted. Now, every time I've asked people in Not a Screen, my family still live up in Croxted. So I did get the information from them. information from them. But nobody has gone to the communities and said, this is not going to happen, or this is going to happen. It's being put back for this time. It's not being put back for this time. So I'm asking, and hopefully I will get the answer here, what is going on with the Stonebridge Cross project? And part of that, by the way, was Club More, where they were looking at Broadway to put a community centre in there. And the last conversation I had with was councillor Tim Jeeves, who told me that as soon as he got out of hospital, he'd be phoning me up and that we'll raise the points about what was going on within the Broadway, within the Stonebridge Cross, within the East Langley Road area about doing special training facilities in there. And we seem to be getting nowhere whatsoever. Now, again, and I'll finish on this, I haven't come back on this council for this amount of time to get kicked from pillars of post and not getting information and not getting answers. I'm not like that. I will pursue it and I will say what I want to say. At this moment in time, I think the people in Croxted, Not a Screen, they're getting treated with contempt. I'm certainly getting treated with contempt. And I don't put up with getting treated with contempt. I'll ask the questions that I need to ask. And I hope sometime today or whatever, somebody has the decency to write to me and let me give me the information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Nib. Mayor John.
Thanks to councillor Nib. And just before Mayor John comes in, just to remind members of few key procedural matters which you will alter their mind. Members are asked to refrain from naming individual officers when that officer is not present or able to give any form of response. As officers, we're subject to employee code of conduct. You have your own code of conduct as members and as a framework called the Member Officer Protocol, which governs how you work with us as officers as well. In terms of the officers you've named, they are aware of the issues and once a response is provided, it will be drafted an issue to you. What I can say is the named officer is not responsible for development matters. The assistant director concerned deals with governance matters. However, that officer is working with other directorates to bring that information together for you. I'd also refer to the recent meeting of Finance and Resources Select Committee, present, which was councillor Jane Corbett, and which councillor Peter Mitchell raised a number of issues related to Stonebridge Cross. The minutes for that meeting will be published in the next two to three weeks at most. However, councillor Corbett indicated she was exploring the financial aspects and constraints as to why that site is not progressed. But a number of comments were specifically raised insofar as being a series of aborted plans made over many years, the contents of which now is historic and not relevant to the future states of that site. Those are being explored alongside reference you've made to the additional funding in terms of potential further topographical surveys. Again, that will be subject to a separate update and that will be given to you and ward colleagues in due course. I'll now defer to the mayor, if I may.
Comes in. Can I make sure that I apologize? I was not criticizing any officer when I was speaking there before. It was a fact, this is what happens. As far as all the information I've just had off the officer, that's more the information I've just had in the last minute than the last three months, with all due respect.
Thank you, councillor Nib. I'm very much appreciative. It was not intended in that particular manner. However, I do, as deputy monitoring officer, have to discharge my statutory responsibilities as well. And that's appreciated by all members, of course. And again, I'll defer to the mayor.
So, George, I do have some answers and I will talk to you offline about it. And we will, as Mike says, we will write to you, but also I can come in, you can come in and chat with us about it. But the last couple of weeks, I've been trying to find the answers for you and I have them now. This isn't the committee or the forum to discuss it, but I'm happy to discuss it with you.
Okay, any further questions? Anybody? Okay. Councillor Radford.
If I may, two specific concerns. Going to say in fairness, I think councillor Nib's question was purely a commentary on lines of communication. There was nothing said that was detrimental. And I think that is totally reasonable. And I, you know, I think we are getting a bit carried away when we can't say which senior officers we had a dialogue with, if I can say that respectfully. Talking about raising complaints with officers respectfully, on the sheet that says complaints of members, officers and between officers and the public, it doesn't say what the target is. And again, it seems a bit vague. I mean, I'll be upfront, I am deeply frustrated having represented a resident that we're still waiting for a progress after 22 months of that resident at Toxteth, who was named by Labour councillors, distribution of being an HIV predator without any criminal proceedings made.
This is inappropriate to talk.
No, but I'm not talking about the comments. I'm saying that's gone on for 22 months. Now, there's no indicator about how long complaints are dealt with and what the outcomes are. So I'm using that as an illustration. On the issue of data, again, it does strike us that there's no levelling of antisocial behaviour, crime data there, that's common profile. And I was going to say to the colleague from Anfield that one of the flip sides of the congestion issue is actually the level of air pollution is a negative impact of the congestion. So are we expected to support this paper? Or are we just noting it as a work in progress? Because it does strike me that it is very much a work in progress rather than a definitive document. Because if it was a definitive document, I would certainly not feel comfortable to support it. Or are we saying this will come back on that? And where will this go to flush out some of the issues that members, I think, quite across the table have raised? Because I think, I think before we decide on what we're doing with it, I think it does need a lot of bit more focus work on it.
Okay. Yeah, Lisa.
So the performance management framework is work in progress, but we have to start somewhere. So we will be reporting on the indicators that are in here in the first sort of quarter. We'll be doing that at the end of November. But we've listened to the comments that have been made today. We will go away. We will have noted down all of those potential additions. And we'll either tell you that we can add them into this report or we will tell you where they will be reported to if they're not part of this quarterly reporting into Cabinet, which then comes into here on a quarterly basis as well. And it might be, as I just, just to reiterate, the population level outcomes are really only sensible to look at on an annual basis. And so we will let you know if what you're raising is something that will be part of that annual report. And we'll just make that very clear to you. So we will be moving forward with the indicators that are in here. We will take on board everybody's suggestions that has been made today. If we can do them, we will, within the boundaries of what's possible and how much capacity we've got to do them. But we'll be very clear if they're reported somewhere else as well, because I think that some of these will drop down into other performance frameworks across the council in different service areas. Is that okay?
Okay. Cheers. Councillor Tua.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just, it's good to hear that we can add in. So I just wondered if I could make a suggestion on the economy and the inclusive economy part. I know that Liverpool were behind, I think, all the core cities in household income salaries. Is there some way that we could look at that and start measuring the improvement on those salaries? Thank you.
Lisa, yeah.
Yep. So absolutely, those are what I would call the population level outcomes that we look at on an annual basis. So I know that things like household income and earnings only comes out on an annual basis. So that will be part of that annual report. And that's a kind of state of the city assessment that we need to look at. What are our big challenges? What are our big things that we need to do on? Are we shifting the dial on some of those things that, you know, members all really want to see change within the city? I think the distinction between what's in front of you today is these are the service level performance indicators that operate within the directorates. Those population level outcomes are looked at on an annual basis. And that, that from our perspective, is the most sensible way to do that. And just so that you know, we are also setting up that type of information to be on dashboard so that you can see that as councillors. But that just takes some time to build and we're working with ICT to get that rolled out. So all of the aims that are within the city plan on health, economy, will have a suite of population level indicators that you will be able to see. And we will look at those as a, you know, as a council on an annual basis. But that information will be, you know, will be on a kind of, I'm going to call it a Power BI dashboard. You don't need to know what that is, but it's kind of an accessible dashboard where you can see what those indicators are doing.
Councillor Murray.
Thanks, Chair. Just, I think this might be another typo on page 18, under child-friendly city, second line, number of children being discharged from care rolling 12 months. It says less is better. I would have assumed more is better. Discharging more children from care is better, presumably.
So Sarah's nodding, so I think that is a typo. Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you. Councillor Gibbons.
Yeah, a bit of a personal interest. When I saw the elected members satisfied that they're supported by the council to undertake their role survey, as a new councillor, I mean, I think the level of training is not yet coherent, particularly just on the bread and butter of what we have to do to residents. We had the Colli report survey, which has obviously dominated everything, given the situation. And I found council officers extremely helpful. But I think we do need to move towards some sort of introductory handbook that is coherent, because I had two or three sort of documents. Nothing is systematic, nothing is encyclopedically or alphabetical. And you tend to troll through colleagues' emails, fill it out, who you approach to. And I think we need to look at something much more planned and coherent, because it is a confident and engaged set of councillors that are actually vital to democracy. And I think that that would be a core piece of work.
Mayor John.
There's two pieces of work in the pipeline. One is the Members Intranet and the other one is Members iCasework system. iCasework is a very simple system that people use already in the council. But what it will help with councillors for is that we can input into the system, we will be given updates, who it's gone to, all that information, that is really helpful. You know, don't forget, I was councillor for two years. It took me six months to find out what to do and how to. I completely understand. And that's separate from, you know, what is your role from scrutiny and everything else. Absolutely get that. But Members Intranet, so it will be, you know, a place where we can go and find the information that we need. But I think the casework system as well will be really helpful in this managing casework and also understanding casework. So for example, we've talked about empty properties and rats and infestations. If we have casework and we can look at the volume of casework and the themes that come out, we can look then at sort of tackling some majority. We all know infestations as a problem. I'm just using that as an example. But it will help us manage and put resources to those problems that we have the most. So I'm really looking forward to members engaging with that. I think one of the first calls with the casework system is for a user group to be set up to test the process. And I'll be bringing that to the council for representatives to participate. But yeah, Members Intranet and iCasework system, I think, will really help.
Lisa, did you have something to add?
Just to, because a reference was made to the to the member survey, just to let the Select Committee know that there will be a staff survey, a member survey and a resident survey developed at the latter part of this year and to be undertaken next year. So the results of those surveys would be good to come into the Select Committee at some point, I'm sure.
Councillor Kemp.
Thank you, Chair. Make it clear, I'm not asking questions. I want to comment on the structure of what's being presented to us today. And I'm grateful to the mayor for explaining to me how the council works. I have picked up one or two tips about that over the last few years. However, what is quite clear is that we are doing things the wrong way around at the moment in this council. And that's important for considering the key performance indicators. Because if we don't ask for the right things, then no one will have a plan to deliver the right things. Then they won't be implemented and we won't be able to monitor them through key performance indicators. And the key point about the city plan is that it is not here from the council, it's here from the chief executive and 14 other chief executives, two of whom have already left and one who's about to. And in a democracy, it is our job as elected representatives to talk about the long term plan for the city. Then it's quite right that the chief executive should bring a series of partners together, because we cannot deliver them ourselves. And it's absolutely right then that there's an implementation plan. But apparently, the conversation last week was inadequate, according to the mayor. Well, she only spoke for two minutes. I spoke for five. Very few people actually contributed at all. Yes, that was deficient. It's where we should have been discussing the meat of what we as elected representatives want. So then, if we accept that there's a failure in the system, as I do, perhaps other people don't, we then need to consider who looks at what and where do they look at it? And colleagues from across the chamber, call it the chamber, have been rightly saying, what about this? What about that? I could come up with another 100 key performance indicators that are missing from this document. But I don't think they should come here because we have to work out what comes to the scrutiny committee, where particularly we look at the overall performance of the council, of the mayor and the chief executive, and what rightly goes to the select committees. And below that, what goes to the assistant executive directors and business unit managers? Of course, we have to compare how well we're doing on children in care compared to Manchester or Bristol or anywhere else. But what we need to be considering here are outcomes as well as outputs, because most of what's here, even if it's described as an outcome, is actually an output. How many people would like to live in Liverpool but can't find the housing? How many people are living in Liverpool but have to go somewhere else? How many of the jobs that we're going to create at a high level in places like the Spine and Paddington Village are going to go to people who either live in Liverpool or who will stay in Liverpool? Do people feel safe in the city? Do people feel safe in Liverpool 18 as compared to Liverpool 8? So there's a series of key performance indicators which don't belong to us. But we are the only elected body for the city as a whole and should be examining them. And that's particularly true of the police, where there seems to be very little feedback between what the police force is doing, the elected police commissioner and ourselves. And I think, if I remember right, that's one of the responsibilities of this select committee. So we, as politicians, need to grip this agenda. We need to make it absolutely clear what we want to see in it. Then we have to make sure there are implementation plans. But the fault with this set of key performance indicators is they're all correct, but they're all low level. They don't add up to something which will enable us to judge the temperature of the city as a whole. Let's measure them. Let's measure them in the right place. But that isn't here. Let's think big. Let's deliver big. Let's not grind our way immediately into the detail which should be left to the select committees and our officers.
Thank you, Mayor John.
So we've had this conversation now a number of times around the city plan. As far as I was aware, I didn't participate, but councillors had the opportunity to be involved in the city plan. The city plan, what's in this document is the service level indicators that we've signed up to in the city plan. What's missing is our council plan, and that's in the process. We're starting that process now to get further down in detail. The city plan is what key partners and anchor institutions, as Lisa calls, population level data, what are we trying to achieve as a city? We've signed up to that. We've signed up to it 18 months ago. We signed up to it a long time ago. Now, Richard, let me finish. Let me finish. The opportunity, the opportunity at the council that everybody had last week to contribute to the city plan, nobody took it up. You took that opportunity to slake the city plan, when that was the opportunity to contribute to the city plan. The city plan has been in process for 18 months. We've signed up to these service level agreements. What's coming for us now is the council plan, which will be incorporated in our living documents. But what we're signed to at this, up to this moment in time, is service level indicators that we've agreed 18 months ago, and that's what's in this document. Now, as Lisa has talked about, this will be an evolving document. Our council plan is the process that you're well aware of, we've talked about it a number of times, that we're starting in the next couple of weeks in terms of identifying and drilling down into our political-led council plan objectives, and that will be incorporated into our performance management framework. But for right now, the indicators that we've signed up to are in the city plan.
Advisors, at the council meeting last week, we discussed a document called the city plan, which had the date on it, October 2020. Could we be told when that document was presented to the cabinet? And when the cabinet presented it to the city council, so that it became our plan?
Councillor Kemp, in terms of the document placed before council last week, the date referenced on the document represents version control insofar as any plan or strategy or authorities granted when that plan is approved by the approving body to make iterative changes and updates. That was the date given for the most up-to-date version of the plan. The document provider was provided for information purposes only to inform, debate and aid members as you considered what your view was politically on the developmental council plan. Obviously, we've had some debate on that already. In terms of the approval process for the actual city plan documents, without the document or reports in front of me, it would be remiss of me to give any precise comments. So I'll revert to you separately and confirm the process for that outside of this meeting.
Thank you, Mike. Any further questions? Councillor Radford.
Chair, I'm trying to be constructive to capture what I think is a consensus of members. I think we've been advised this is a work in progress. Certainly, I've got reservations that actually some of the indicators are actually, at very best, not well written. And some of those may not be the key priorities of the wards for the scrutiny committees. And I'm picking up on councillor Kemp's comments. Will we be moving that this is just noted as a work as progress? And would it be directed to each of the scrutiny committees so that they can redefine and develop the priorities for their scrutiny committee? Because I think this really does need a lot more work, and it's something that is important. Because I think councillor Kemp's point is, if we haven't got what we're measuring right, we're not going to get the right outputs or outcomes and the right priorities. So I'm just wondering, what are we being moved today? And wondering if we could catch up some of the reservations rather than just be negative. I think, I think certainly, I would imagine each scrutiny committee should be asked to look at refining and prioritising, because I think there's also danger if you have that many indicators that we used to have on the old FBI system, KPI system, there was that many indicators. Councils spent all the time number crunching and spent less time doing things, and they didn't get always the priorities. So I'm just going to suggest that as a way forward to capture the concerns, which I think has actually been all across all, all the wards, all the political affiliations today.
Mayor John.
Lisa said that's what was happening, it was going to middle select, I think. You know, Lisa answered your question earlier by saying that's what was happening there.
Any more questions? Okay, can I move that we note the report and that a further update is provided at our next meeting? Is that agreed? Yeah, Lisa.
So we will produce a full report with all the data for Cabinet at the end of November. And that full report with all of the indicators will come back in here and to all of the select committees. And we will then continually refine that list. I'm not sure whether there's time for us to get to the select committees now before we produce the full report over the next couple of weeks.
Chair.
Okay.
Can I suggest that the chairs meet at the ends of each cycle, all the chairs are select. So maybe we just have a discussion about the performance framework like this with the select committee chairs and cover the lot. Which picks up Steve's point about what's going on.
Okay. Okay, so that's agreed, yes. Okay, just a reminder to members, our next meeting is scheduled to take place on the 13th of January 2022. That concludes today's meeting. Thank you for coming and thank you for contributions. Stay safe, everybody, and I'll see you in the new year, or we'll see one another in the new year. Thank you.